All right. Good evening, everybody. For the record, Thursday, September 8, 2022, it's 5:15 PM. The City Council is out of executive session. I've called the regular meeting to order. As always, we start with a pledge to our flag. Whose turn? Did you do it last time?
Nope.
All right, Councilmember Hornby.
Ready. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Hornby. Roll call this evening. We have six councilmembers present. Councilmember Kulas, are you with us on the phone this evening? I do not hear him, so we will proceed without. Our first item on our agenda is now citizen comment. So this would be a time if any member of the audience wishes to address the council on something that's not on today's agenda, we ask you to come up and give you five, three minutes or so. Seeing no takers. We have our consent items first, and then we'll do some presentations. So the consent items this evening include approval of this evening's agenda, vouchers, and our minutes from our previous meetings. I would entertain a motion for approval.
Your honor, I make a motion to approve the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from the previous meetings as written.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Hornby to adopt this evening's consent items, including tonight's agenda, vouchers, and our minutes from our previous meetings. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have two presentations tonight. The first is a Constitution Week proclamation. Do we know who's got that?
I have it.
You have it? Councilmember Harold, would you read that into the record, please?
I would be honored. Proclamation, this is for Constitution Weeks, September 17 through the 23rd, 2022, whereas September 17, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitution Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate this occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the using of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, Washington, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. In witness thereof, whereof, I have caused the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on the eighth day this day of September 2022. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Harold. Marjorie, are you here?
I am.
How are you today?
I'm well, thank you. I'm coming from John Kendrick Chapter, Daughters of American Revolution.
Oh, excellent.
And I thank you very much on the behalf of our daughters, who comprise members from Douglas and Chelan County and Little Grant County. So, thank you.
Hold on. We're getting our picture taken.
You bet.
First of all, we need a picture to put on our Facebook page.
Okay.
Everyone wants a picture taken with Tanny. Get over here.
Come on.
So I see the WDA. Do you want to do that, or you want to postpone it? All right, we'll do it. Come on up, Linda. I'm joking.
Come on. I believe, Mayor, this is my 11, or close to, our annual little visit with the council.
Yes.
Will be my last. There's your good news for the day. Inside, you will see.
Thank you.
Couple of things. You will see something that we are calling an impact report. Typically, typically, Mayor, we bring you an annual report. When I went to the National Main Street Conference, they recommended that we pivot to something called an impact. What's the impact that Main Street is to communities? So we, this is hot off the press today. Katie actually did this, did an impact report. So you can kind of see some Main Street statistics and our board, key sponsors, BNO donors. It just kind of gives you a little recap of what the work that we do. I have a little, a little note from me and saying thank you to the city, great partners for the WDA, again, for last year. So, Mayor, that just gives you and the council a little look at what's going on. A couple of things I will note for you, and there is an invitation to the State Main Street Conference. Mayor, I think you're only in about three presentations, is all.
Does my calendar know that?
Your calendar knows that.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll make sure again. But it is October 19, 20, and then half of the 21st. We have a couple of really good things happening at the PAC. And what this conference, we haven't had one of these since 2018. In 2019, there was a national conference in Seattle, so they forego. So we were supposed to host this in 2020, and we all know what happened in 2020. So we've been on hold. Something that has changed is we will have some daily sessions at the convention center. They're a little at capacity, which is a good news. But we are moving and spreading out throughout the community. There'll be about 250 here.
Good.
From 36 communities plus those wanting to be Main Streets. Our presentations will be, again, a little bit at the convention center, will be at PIBUS, will be, Brian and Ann Cook are allowing us to be at the Liberty. So there'll be presentations in two Liberty Theaters for those three days. The opening and closing speakers will be at the PAC, and home base will be at the Chamber. Just a couple of things. We obviously, Halloween's coming, right? After this conference. And because of great sponsors, we were able to purchase almost $4,000 worth of candy at wholesale. That's about to arrive, and that's always fun when I get the candy shipment. And then also, we will have, we'll back to normal for our wine walk in November the 12th, 500 people. And we just purchased permits, so we'll be in 14 permitted locations plus the wineries on that day. Moss Adams is going to sponsor again with Dave and Sandy Colatley. And then, when I was at National, I got a fun little idea, and we're going to do a cookie stroll on the 3rd of December. And it's like a wine walk, only with cookies. Lovey N is sponsoring. They'll get a cute little.
It's selection.
A cute little cookie tin. And they'll start at Lovey N, and there'll be 13 stops for families to collect their cookies from 10 until 3. That day, those will go on, that, those tins will go on sale. We have 100. And there'll be 13 locations, because it's a baker's dozen. The 13th location will be Firehouse Pet, and you'll get a cookie for your dog. So that will be super fun. And then at 4 o'clock, we invite you to come and light the community Christmas tree. So it will be lit at 4 o'clock on, at, there at the Plaza on the 3rd of December. So my board is, as Travis will know, actively working on what the future looks like. So we are moving forward to, and it's not, I'm going to steal Serena Williams. I'm not retiring, I'm evolving, as well as our organization will evolve. And we will move forward to something new. And that's what we're looking forward to, is hiring and having, having a new vision. So that's kind of short and sweet. I've stayed true to form, no PowerPoints in all 11 years, and I'll keep that. So I'll be done in the end of February, 2023. So annual dinner will be our la, my last, so it'll be super fun to celebrate, so.
Got your email today, and I'll be in touch with you with that here in the next little bit.
Perfect.
It was downtown Friday night. Place was hopping, lots going on.
First Fridays.
I know.
First Fridays downtown.
No, it was great. Norwood, and place was packed. And it was just, seemed like there was a lot happening in Wenatchee on Friday night.
And new stuff coming, right?
Yeah.
So it's going to be fun, the new, the buildings that are being transformed. And that's another thing, we'll get to showcase that for the conference. So the walking tours and stuff. Rory's doing one. We'll do one with Lineage, Cascadian, we'll do that whole set.
Okay.
The one you're participating in is really kind of the PIBUS story.
Yeah.
Still important. And then, yeah, you're also doing a session on ARPA funds, which I'm sure you're just ecstatic to get to do.
The ARPA one is easy. I'm going to need someone to help me on the history of PIBUS, because I forgot all the little parts of it.
Okay. Really? Yeah, the conversation is that collaborative, private, public partnership that makes it so unique, so, super.
Okay.
Nothing else. Thank you.
Any questions for Linda while we have her here?
Well, I'm just going to make a comment. You said something about this being your last presentation being the good news, and I'm going to disagree with that.
Well, not everybody will disagree with that.
Linda, you have been a great cheerleader for the downtown association.
Thank you.
You are going to be sort of.
Well, thank you. I'm not going far.
I know you're not.
Thank you.
We really appreciate all the efforts you have done to keep our downtown.
Thank you. And I will be back to see you for Small Business Saturday proclamation in, in November.
Perfect.
Life is good. So thank you all, and we'll see you downtown. Cookie stroll goes on sale first part of November, just now.
We've got to get you back long enough to do a presentation in our new headquarters.
I cannot wait.
I know. All right, thanks, Linda. All right, we've got three action items and one public hearing item this evening. So the first is regarding a change order with TW Clark for some work they're doing downstairs. So Alyssa Schaefer, come up and get us updated.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Alyssa Schaefer, Facilities Manager for the Public Works Department. The Wenatchee City Hall redevelopment project is on the home stretch with the interior work down to punch list activities. The exterior work is approximately 30% complete. It is wonderful to see the existing marble being reinstalled to the building, showcasing the 25 new windows. I'm here this evening to recommend the project change order number 14 with TW Clark Construction LLC be approved by council. This change order request includes two separate project delay concerns, one being project delays that occurred as a result of the BIM or MEP redesign process, as well as multiple RFI-driven interruptions to the schedule. The contractor was unable to efficiently progress through the construction schedule due to inefficiency brought forth by these two, these two processes. The other delay concern is a result from the exterior cladding complications, which began in February of this year. The costs associated with this delay include the expense to perform a marble evaluation, the extended scaffolding rental period, as well as the contractor and their subcontractors' inability to start work until a resolution was determined. That occurred in July. The contractor is requesting a scaled-back extended general conditions or construction oversight compensation to complete the exterior marble installation. The total amount of change order number 14 is $172,423 plus tax and adds 72 working days to the contract, bringing the contract completion date to November 14. It has been determined through the project budget analysis that project number 1716 has the funds to cover the cost of this change order.
So overall, you think we're on budget or really within a couple dollars of on budget?
Correct.
With the contingency and all that, we are?
Yeah.
Perfect.
We have enough funds to get through the project.
Good.
Does that also include the exterior lighting?
It includes a portion of the exterior lighting. We will have to request some additional funds for the balance.
The Finance Committee talked about that today a little bit. And so I know we've talked in exec session a little bit about what the number was we were talking about, and it's going to be less than half of that. So we still feel like it's within what we talked about. Any questions for Alyssa? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion for City Council to approve the contract change order with TW Clark Construction LLC and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Roger Nostian. We have a second by Councilmember Cuevas to approve the contract change order with TW Clark Construction LLC and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Alyssa.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work downstairs. All right, fair property annexation. Mr. Parsons, are you going to come do that? If I'm not mistaken, this is the fifth time we've seen it?
That's probably right.
10, 60, public hearing, public hearing. Set the date for the public hearing, the public hearing, and then now.
10%, and the resolution to set the public hearing.
No, 10%, 60%. Resolution to set the public hearing. We had the public hearing, and now. I think it's been five times.
Okay.
I don't know.
Right.
But don't you approve the 10? Didn't you approve the 60?
You don't, the council doesn't see the 60.
Oh, okay. All right, maybe it's four times.
Matt Parsons, Senior Planner. As the mayor is saying, I brought, I bring before you the ordinance 2022-17, which is the final approval for the Fair Properties LLC annexation. Just as a reminder, this is five parcels. They're at the northeast corner of McKittrick Street and Northwestern Avenue. And the, the public hearing for this one, for the City Council, was on April 14th, which is why this is now an action item rather than a public hearing, because the public hearing has already been held. And then the Boundary Review Board also held a public hearing on July 27th. And they issued their final decision of, the written decision of approval on August 24th, which is then authorizing for the passage of an ordinance. So staff recommends approval of ordinance 2022-17.
All right, any questions for Matt? If not, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for City Council to pass ordinance number 2022-17, providing for the annexation of an unincorporated area containing five parcels located northeast of the intersection of McCuttry Street and Northwestern Avenue, also known as the Fair Properties LLC annexation, subject to the provisions of ordinance number 2007-34 and all subsequent amendments thereto.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold, and second by Councilmember Hornby to adopt ordinance 2022-17, providing for the annexation of an unincorporated area containing five parcels located northeast of the intersection of McKittrick Street and Northwestern Avenue, also known as the Fair Properties LLC annexation, subject to the provisions of ordinance number 2007-34 and all subsequent amendments thereto. Any discussion?
I just, I wanted to make a comment that, you know, this is one of the most detailed reports we've seen back from Boundary Review Board. It looks like they took a lot of time. They heard testimony from some people within the boundaries that were opposed to it. It looks like they came to a fair decision, so.
Yeah, I guess my only comment was, it was a, when you look at island annexation, so you have an area that's completely surrounded by the city, and there's a small island of county. And you get an annexation of these five parcels, right? That is a standard garden variety, five to nothing. Shouldn't even have a discussion about the merits, because we've all already decided that that's, that's just the way they go. And so when something like that comes up three to two, you go, my goodness. And then we had the JAB Investors one the other day, and it failed as well. So you now have two members of the Boundary Review Board who have never, haven't voted yet on an annexation for the City of Wenatchee that they like. That's concerning to me as the mayor, as someone who thinks annexations should happen in a regular and continual method. And that's, I struggle with that. I told the commissioners that on Tuesday.
Especially when they're, like you said, in an island.
Yeah, yeah. And as much as the gentleman didn't want to come in, and I get it, and I understand that, lives on McKittrick Street, it just sort of feels like the city. And so, again, Keith, I don't disregard all of the findings and facts and conclusions. I will tell you, that's a whole bunch of work from somebody to, I mean, over an annexation that's five parcels and we're trading $1,500 in property tax. I mean, just a whole level of complication that I personally don't think is necessary.
But again, I think it did come to a fair conclusion, so.
Yeah, yeah. All right, any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Hopefully, I'm making your life easier. Mr. Jammerman, some concrete work. We have some councilmembers who'll be excited about that.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll make this quick. This is, we have a annual small works contract that we approve with, we have a contractor that's on call to do concrete work for us, various ramps, some sidewalk gaps that we're going to pursue, panels that need to be replaced. So the council gave, gives Public Works $300,000 to do concrete work. This contract is with Jones Construction for $149,000, some change. You may have already seen Precision Concrete is in town doing grinding, so that's also part of that $300,000. This is just asking that the council authorize the mayor to sign this contract. We get Jones going on these ramps and sidewalk tripping hazards, panel replacements. All of you know where some of these are at. It's just a one-year contract with Jones. The previous contract that we had, that one expired in June. And, and just as an FYI, Jones is highly regarded in the Valley for their, their work. They're actually, did all the work on our paving project right now. Any questions?
And for me, councilmembers? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion for the City Council to approve the construction contract for the unit price concrete flatwork project number SW22-05 to Jones Concrete in the amount of $149,036.50, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Cuevas to award the construction contract for the unit price concrete flatwork project number SW22-05 to Jones Concrete in the amount of $149,036.50, authorize the mayor to sign the contract documents. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
All right, we have one public hearing item tonight. This is regarding the Jacoby Annexation. So for purposes of public hearings, we will hear from staff. We'll ask questions of staff. We'll turn it over to any members of the audience that wish to address the City Council, and then back to the City Council for any action they may be willing to take. So representing the city, Mr. Parsons, go ahead.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Parsons, Senior Planner. I'm here presenting to you for the Jacoby Annexation. This is the public hearing to consider this annexation. It's a single parcel south of Maple Street, right across the street from Foothills Middle School, and located in one of the unincorporated islands of territory in the, in the city. And this is a resolution that, if you choose to approve it, would provide for a notice of intention to be sent to the Boundary Review Board. And so we'll go through that process, and then, again, then it would come back here for a final ordinance. But this is the point when we put the, have the public hearing in this new process, so.
Any questions for Mr. Parsons? Obviously, this is just a one lot. Hearing no questions? And any members of the audience which address the City Council on this public hearing item regarding the Jacoby Annexation? Seeing no takers. I will turn it over to the council for any action they may be willing to take.
Your Honor, I will move for City Council to pass Resolution Number 2022-23, providing for the notice of intent to the Chelan County Boundary Review Board to annex certain property to the City of Wenatchee.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by, or motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Roger Nostian to adopt Resolution 2022-23, providing for the notice of intent to the Chelan County Boundary Review Board to annex certain property to the City of Wenatchee. I think after we're done, I'll have a discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Matt.
Thanks.
Mayor's report. I do have a couple of things on the mayor's report. First, I will, I'm going to make sure I mention both of these things, so. So I did meet with the county commissioners on Tuesday for 45 minutes or so, talked about a number of city-county issues. The Boundary Review Board annexations did come up, and I indicated that it was my thought that we would be done with annexations, that we had two actually single lot ones that we were continuing to pursue that came in sort of before, at least, my thoughts on that were known. The Jacoby one is one, and there's one by the Mathston family that owns some property down on Crawford Street for purposes of building the private school, River Academy. So obviously, those decisions belong to the council and not me, so I don't want to speak for the council. But the last two, especially the fair and the JAB Investors one in terms of the amount of time that Matt Parsons has to spend doing these things. And I think the public record on the JAB one was 74 pages long, all our, our work, work by Steve Smith and staff. And at the end of the day, you're fighting over $1,184 in property tax. So I told them, I said, I just don't think the benefit of all of the staff time is, or the cost of all that warrants the benefit that we get from annexing these properties. You know, I did mention to them, you know, we, we have a, an agreement with the county on the annexation. And the agreement is fairly clear that both the city and the county remain neutral on all annexations inside the UGA. That's just what it says. So we have been neutral. We, we provide the documentations at the Boundary Review Board hearings. We don't participate. County comes in, writes a 50-page legal brief about why they're against it. Doesn't even provide it to us, right? We got our copy of three minutes to things. It's like, and we have a public hearing, right? And so it's like, we're just, we're fighting an uphill battle, right? We're just never going to win when it's just not a level playing field. It's not a fair playing field. So you guys ultimately make those decisions, but I instructed staff that the next person that walks into our office and wants to do an annexation petition, we send it to the county. They can process them the same way we can. We don't have to be the processors of it, right? In a local agreement, they can do all the work themselves and send it to us for our interpretation. So I did mention that to them on Tuesday, so we'll see what happens. I'm not anticipating there'd be very many annexations. And, and it's too bad. It's, listen, no, it's not a big deal to the county. It's not a big deal to the city. It's too bad for the property owners who want to use our staff and our interpretation of our code to their benefit. And the fact that that's done is disappointing to me. But I don't have any other way to, to make that happen, so.
So to be clear, are you saying if somebody came to the city and said, I want to be annexed into the city, you would turn them away and tell them to go?
I would tell them to go to the county first, ask the county to process it. If the county said no, they wouldn't process it. Then I would ask them to fill out the 10% petition and bring it here. I would ask you guys to vote no. I can get outvoted, but my, there are rare circumstances, like the one that we're dealing with, the one on Crawford Street, okay? So the reason that one is coming forward is there's one parcels in the city and one parcels in the county, right? And they want to build a school, and so the county one needs to come into the city, right? So they can use, all right, that one makes sense, right? So I, if I'm, I think the county will fight this one, to be honest with you. I think they will. I think they'll figure out a reason why that's not, shouldn't happen, but who knows? So ultimately, that's, that decision comes to you guys. So I don't want to be absurd, your, your ability to do that. But, yeah, I was, it's just a, we're just in a really tough spot. For Councilmember Poyer and Councilmember Huffaker, and I won't get into too much detail, but both the City Finance Committee and the Public Works Committee at our last meetings discussed a little bit about, talking about what East Wenatchee did with car tabs. So if you're aware, East Wenatchee got rid of the $20 car tabs and chose to do a sales tax instead. And so that had been, that's been talked about at both the Public Works Committee and the Finance Committee. So if you guys want information on that, you can contact me, contact Laura. Brad is probably the best person to sort of talk to about it. So again, there was a lot, and you, you've seen the minute notes, I'm sure, and all that.
Is it something the state did just kind of quietly? I mean, how did, how did we?
We, we, Brad doesn't know how he missed it. He doesn't miss anything, so.
I was just wondering if it was something they did quietly and?
It passed in the legislature, so it became law July 1st, right? That's when all those laws became, was it June 1st or July 1st? July 1st. And so East Wenatchee was up on it, and I guess one other small city near Vancouver has done it. So just sort of the newer.
From the looks of it, it just absolutely makes perfect sense.
Yeah, yeah. So I just want you guys to know that it's been discussed. If you have questions, then Brad, me, Laura, whoever, but it may come to a City Council meeting near and dear to your hearts in the next month or so. Laura, anything to add?
Just two, just two items. Next week on the 13th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., the PUD and the city are continuing the planning process for Riverfront Park. So this is first, the first phase of improvements. The architect has done some conceptual drawings, and they're ready to kind of present those to the public and get some more feedback. So there's two open houses. So next week on the 13th from 4:00 to 7:00, so that's an evening. And then on the 14th from 7:00 to 10:00 a.m. in the morning. There will also be two booths along the Apple Capital Loop Trail where the improvements will be made. So it'll be nice for the public to be able to go to the spot where the splash pad, the potential splash pad will be and kind of, so, you know, imagine what that could look like and, and again, get feedback on those. The other item is the fire station. So next week, the 14th is the deadline for any interested parties to submit an offer on that building. So we will be taking those through September 14th, and then probably present those to the council thereafter for consideration, depending on what we get.
So at some point, you may think about if we get a whole bunch of them, that maybe we get a subcommittee of the council together with you to go, go over them and maybe make a recommendation to the full council or something? Couple sets ayes?
Yeah. Yeah, I think just depending on what we get. We're always hopeful. There's been lots of pokes and lots of tours, but you just never know. So hopefully, if we get a couple, we definitely want to get the, get the council to weigh in on those.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
We have met with, there's sort of two developer finalists for the PUD property. We met with one, or I met with one last week. I think we're meeting with Ted in the next week or two. So both of those developers have come in to meet with the city just to discuss overall development and what's going on with that. Again, it's a PUD and port process, we're sort of out of it. But I think most of them anticipate some, as we look at redoing the streets and maybe some sidewalk improvements, I think they, they each are anticipating some participation from the city to some degree. I don't know exactly what that would, would be, but something. All right, so when do we meet again? Two weeks from today? I'm in the wrong month. I already went through this another month, so.
Yeah.
So how are we, do we have, we don't have work session next week?
Nope. So we'll meet again on the 22nd.
When will our next public safety? Following month?
Don't know when their next public safety would be.
It's the month, so I think October?
Right now, I've got us October 20th.
Yeah, October 20th.
If you think we should meet sooner, then let us know. We can always schedule something.
I don't know if there's anything pressing. I know, you know, we, we've already talked a little bit about the speeding going around the high school, and I think that continues to be a big issue, but I think Chief addressed that pretty well when the decision came in. So all in all, we're continuing to move forward and collect data.
Okay. Council members, anything from your committee work?
I will be on vacation next week and miss the homeless task force meeting.
Okay.
Jose Cuevas has volunteered.
Okay, and it sounds like I might be going to that.
Good.
Based on some early discussions we may have had, I may be attending that as well.
And I'm also on the 20th, I'm going to be in Seattle. I will miss the Public Works Committee meeting.
Okay.
But Councilmember Poyer has agreed to take my place.
And did the committee okay him being there? I don't know. We might have to discuss that. That's a, that's a committee decision. I don't think you have authority to just put him in there on your behalf. All right, we'll accept it, okay. Was there anything from you, Mike?
Shalane Douglas, Transportation Council, the, talking about the Regio Aquatic Center. I know it's like a, we're thinking 10 years, right? Or whatever it is. It's really exciting, because you have, you know, you have the mayors there and the county commissioners, and everybody's on board realizing, of course, it's going to create a problem, because you're going to have to deal with the Lashan Bridge.
Yep.
And interchange. But there's a lot of enthusiasm. It's going to be on Douglas County. It's just, to me, it's exciting as a whole region. And I don't know, I know it's a 10-year project or whatever it is, but it, for some reason, it's, it's a passion that I think we need as a, to bring us all together.
And I'll, I'll spend some time, I'm at the, there's a meeting on the 15th that I got invited to that Senator Hawkins is hosting, so I'll represent the city on the 15th and see if we can get, we'll need legislation first, and then some sort of a vote regarding some sales tax. And I think the issue is how can you make it both counties? If you can make it two countywide, that will provide a significant amount of dollars that could not only build a very nice facility, but also operate one. Top anything from you? No? Travis?[1773.06]